All right, let's call it over to this board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for December 2nd.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, let's have a pledge of allegiance and then an invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which is stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, without fraud. All right, do we have Leonard? All right.
I'm here. I'm here, this is Scott Dickinson.
Okay, Scott.
All right, well, we're in the, in the season, in the church season, what they call Advent, leading up to Christmas, so, um, we've been looking forward to, to something good during this year, so hopefully everybody can look forward to Christmas with some sort of, uh, positive affirmation, so, uh, let's pray together, Lord, we thank you for all that you've been doing for us, even though we've been going through some crying times, but, uh, Lord, people, uh, you've shown the strength of people, and, uh, you've shown the strength of our, of our county, um, and, um, the people that are around, the people that are in our leadership, and we're thankful for that, continue to pray for our commissioners, and, uh, for all those, uh, department heads who are just doing their best to, um, run the, run the business of the, of the county, um, and the city people as well, uh, during this, during this COVID time, and we're grateful for that. Uh, just continue to keep folks safe, help us to remember to, to practice those safe things, of distancing and wearing our masks and all of that with, hopefully with a joyful heart, a grateful heart that we have these things, um, be with those that are in the rest homes, um, not being able to visit, um, it's just, it's a, it's a hard time, but, Lord, be with them, continue to watch over everything that goes on, and we know, I have said from the beginning of this, that you've got this, and, uh, I trust our, our leaders to take care of these things, and so, Lord, I'm grateful for that, continue to give them direction, and, uh, Lord, just be with our citizens, help our citizens just to practice those things that I've mentioned, but, Lord, thank you again for this day, um, and, uh, the, the cold weather, and, uh, maybe some snow coming, I don't know, but, Lord, we just thank you for everything you've done for us, help us to keep that positive attitude about us, and, uh, be watchful for what's happening and anticipating Christmas, and what that means, even though it'll be a different this year, but, Lord, help us to do that. Thank you again for this day, watch over our, our, our county and the, uh, this leadership that we have, and we ask it in your name, amen.
All right, thank you, Scott, thanks for stepping in, we appreciate you. All right, correspondence and organizational business?
Yeah, I don't have anything, Cole, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, public comment?
I don't have any, thank you.
All right. Consent agenda today would include tax change orders in the amount of $441.62, claim vouchers, $292,923.03, payroll is $1,271,108.48, and minutes from our November 25th meeting, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Commissioner Howard makes the motion.
All right. Perfect.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Yeah, moving right along, our first item of business is rezoning application. Good morning, Larry Walrod, planning and zoning director. He is muted, can you unmute yourself? Still? All right, Larry, you are muted. Could you unmute yourself, please?
Chair Weymeyer, I show him over on the attendee side, so he d- doesn't have the authority to speak on the attendee side, so.
Dustin's telling me he's moved him over, he's got it taken care of on, on his side, but. Tell you what, let's jump to David on the, our second item, look at, uh, buying some culverts. David?
Good morning, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, this morning, we will, uh, would like to get approval to, um, uh, purchase, uh, a few culverts from, uh, J and J Drainage Products. Uh, we sent out a bid, um, our bid sheet, uh, a week or so ago, and we had three respondents, uh, with J and J Drainage Project Products being the lowest and best bid, and we would like approval to move forward with that. This is a, um, uh, by comparison, this is a relatively small order. Uh, the intent is to, uh, just get us through the end of the year, and then January, February timeframe, we'll come back with a larger order, um, to, to ramp up for the new year.
All right, pretty straightforward. Any questions? Anyone like to make a motion to award the bid to J and J Drainage Products for $7,110?
This is Don, I'll make that motion.
All right.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, Larry, are you able to? All right.
Com- Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yeah.
I can run down the hall and bring him down to my office if that would help.
That'd be a good solution. All right, let's jump down to our third item of business, which is to consider a temporary salary increase for the public health officer, Derek?
Yeah, thanks, Cole, um, so the cover sheet kind of speaks for itself. Um, the county has, uh, I don't want to say historically paid, um, Dr. Ransom $35,000 a year to be our public health officer, because I know in the last few years, we've raised that, so historically, we've paid him even less than that to be our public health officer, but his salary, um, at the start of the pandemic through current is $35,400 a year. He recently reached out to me, um, requesting an increase. He has spent an exorbitant amount of time, um, working with the county, particularly with Nick and I, um, on the myriad decisions that have to be made, um, and what he's realized is that this has come at the expense of his private practice, and so, he has asked for a raise, he asked for a raise of $5,000 per month, so that would bring the total we pay him to about eight grand per month. Um, obviously, that's an appreciable raise, um, and my opinion is, he is worth every penny of it. I frankly, and, and I say this all the time, so this will come as no surprise to the five of you, I'm incredibly proud of my staff, and I think certainly, we have credibility in our own right, but we are not physicians, um, we are not epidemiologists, we're, I mean, we're nothing close to that, and while I don't think Dr. Bud would call himself an epidemiologist, he's obviously a, a very, very knowledgeable, very experienced physician, and I don't know where the county's response would be without him. Um, he has been there from the beginning, he has been there through, um, a change in the Health Department Director, and his support of us has never wavered at all, and so, um, I am recommending that we increase his salary by $5,000 per month, beginning in March of 20, which is when this pandemic began, through the duration of the pandemic. Now, because we don't know, um, how long that will be, I would ask for, that you all give me the discretion, um, to, um, reduce that back to the normal rate at the end, whenever that is. My intention is to use CARES Act funds to pay for this, so not a dollar of this increase will be paid with county tax dollars, um, we have the CARES Act funds to pay for this without breaking a sweat, and so, what questions can I answer for any of you?
This is Commissioner Dickinson.
Go ahead, I am.
I was just gonna say, so, how do you determine it's over when the vaccine's available, when we don't have cases in the county, when? I don't know.
Yeah, that, that's a great question, and I don't have a, a perfect answer for that, I am. That, I mean, that's a discussion that I'm obviously happy to have with the board, um, it will be a decision that's made in conjunction with the staff that we have at the Health Department, obviously, I mean, a vaccine, and I'm gonna talk about this during our staff report, like, a vaccine becoming available, um, is obviously incredibly helpful, but I don't think it marks the end of a pandemic, if anything, it's gonna cause a, you know, a crazy increase in our workload here at the county, and so, I don't think there are objective metrics that I can give you currently, um, for when that will be over, but it's an ongoing discussion that you all will be involved in.
This is Cole, and to kind of overly simplify, all we're really doing is compensating the doctor for his time, so, and I'm sure that's something you'll monitor, and as, you know, the amount of time this has eaten up of his, goes down, we'll, we'll, uh, be ready to make an adjustment.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. Go ahead.
Go ahead, I am.
You wanna answer, Derek, go ahead.
Okay, this is Commissioner Dickinson, I would just agree that he is absolutely, uh, he has been such a great part of our response to this, uh, uh, this pandemic, that, I mean, I think we over and over again say how much we appreciate him, so I guess, uh, this is our way of really saying we do appreciate him.
Yeah, and, and I spoke with Dr. Bud about this at length, he, he is not, um, he is not trying to get rich off the county, obviously, and, and he, this is, as you said, Cole, this is really to compensate him for his time, I mean, he, it's hard for me to quantify how much more time he has spent, um, working on behalf of the county during this pandemic than he did before, but I, it's certainly a huge multiplier, I mean, he, he's been involved with us every step of the way, and, and certainly, I, knowing Dr. Bud, he would be the first to come forward and tell me, as his time starts ramping off and he's doing less and less, he will tell me that, um, he won't have to, because I will be on top of it, but certainly, he will tell me that, and so, I, yeah, we'll ramp this down as is appropriate, as the time he spends becomes less and less. Thank you.
Derek, this is Don. I'll write it for you.
Yes, sir.
Won't the, uh, being this is being paid for with the CARES Act funds, won't they determine when it's done?
No, they, so our consultant doesn't really have that level of, of involvement in this, and to be clear, like, the, the CARES Act money technically has to be spent by the end of December, but we have requested and received reimbursement for so many of our salaries here at the county, so we've actually been reimbursed for the salaries of everyone in the Health Department, for my salary, for Janet's salary, for Casey's salary, and the county receives that as, I mean, it, it's basically cash that we have now put into our reserve funds, because we've already budgeted for those expenses, and so, that is the money that will be used into 2021, still CARES Act money, it's just free and clear, and that's the money we'll use into 2021, but to succinctly answer your question, Don, no, they, Widow Brian doesn't monitor at this quite at that level, that will be on county staff to do that, and again, I'll, I will be right on top of that.
Okay.
All right, well, if everyone's comfortable with this, the motion that, uh, would be in front of us is, uh, to move to approve a temporary salary increase for Dr. Ransom in the amount of $5,000 per month for the period beginning March 2020 through the duration of this pandemic, as determined by the county administrator, and of course, Derek's gonna keep us updated and in the loop on, on that. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Well, this is Commissioner Dunn, um, I'll make that motion with a comment, uh, I appreciate what Dr. Ransom has done for the county, it's really helped me in, uh, communicating with my district when I got questions about, uh, you know, the science behind this, and, and some of the decisions made, and I appreciate Dr. Ransom helping out the Health Department and helping out the county in general, and also, I think we need to compensate him for, uh, a little bit of loss of practice, because he's been spending so much time on this issue, so, yes, I'd, uh, make the motion to approve this, uh, uh, $5,000 a month from, uh, March on.
All right. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
Thank you, I am.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, back to our first item of business on the rezoning application, good morning, Larry?
Good morning, can you hear me now?
Sure can.
I could hear every word you guys were saying, but I, I don't know what happened, I was talking with Janet earlier, but it disappeared, uh, so, I apologize for that, uh.
No worries, we have plenty to do, so, all right.
This, uh, matter I had this morning is a consideration for rezoning. This is to rezone, uh, two different parcels, one of those, uh, would be, uh, uh, an existing residence that, uh, Mr. Morgan's mother lived in for some, several years, and the other is where an old, uh, residence was many years ago, but has since been converted all into a larger piece of, uh, agricultural land. The planning commission gives consideration to the zoning requests to rezone those from the agricultural zoning district to the appropriate RE residential estate zone at their meeting in October. Uh, the reason this is delayed is, you're getting the legal descriptions associated with the surveys that are attached as a part of your staff report. And the planning commission has forwarded a recommendation to you to approve the rezone of both of these tracts based on the findings set forth in the draft resolution that's attached as part of your, uh, staff report. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
Uh, this is Commissioner Dunn, uh, Larry, have we done these multiple, uh, zonings at one time? Four?
Yes, uh, when they were under, uh, a, a single ownership, uh, we have done them, uh, the, the reason this appears, uh, to be totally separate is that they're in two different sections, and as a result of that, uh, they carry with it entirely different, uh, legal descriptions that are associated with, uh, those different sections.
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
There you are, yeah, I got, I accidentally dumped the call, we sure are.
I'm not making the motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is your down, second.
All right.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, down to staff reports, Derek?
I think, Cole, um, so we are kind of, um, in a period that I would describe as the calm before the storm, um, I, I think that, um, we are expecting a, a huge surge of COVID cases, um, starting next week, I mean, I, I suspect that that surge is gonna carry us into 2021, so I have been working to make sure that staff are lined out appropriately. I think contact tracing is, um, gonna become increasingly difficult, so obviously, making sure that the Health Department, um, is lined out as best that they can be, and then, you know, the, obviously, Chief Robbins is, is our interim Health Department Director, and his ability to really focus his time exclusively on COVID depends on his Assistant Chief Hilliker, um, running ambulance appropriately, and therapeutically over in dispatch, running that appropriately, so, or making sure that those departments are taken care of, making sure that maintenance understands the role that it has in all of this, and is on an appropriate cleaning schedule, making sure emergency management understands what is expected of them, and so, obviously, this is something that we've done, um, throughout this pandemic, but I, I think that, honestly, I think the next eight to 10 weeks could potentially be as busy a time as we have had, um, obviously, the, the number of cases is gonna drive that, but also, and, and this is great news, but also, the vaccine being on the horizon, so, we're starting to get a lot of correspondence regarding these vaccines, um, but with that comes a lot of, I mean, there's just a lot of things at the local level that we have to talk through, a lot of logistics-related questions, um, what can we do, if anything, now to best position ourselves to get as many vaccines as possible, a- and that's something that obviously requires a lot of thought, because I, we know that, I think eventually, these will be mass-produced, but for the first several months of this, I think it's gonna be hard to get our hands on them, so we're trying to develop strategies to do that, um, making sure that we're on the same page regarding our own distribution plan once we do have them, I mean, generally, the, the state has a plan, I think the nation has a plan about, um, those in nursing homes and, and those on the front lines of, of, you know, the healthcare workers, for example, I think are generally gonna be the first in line to get it, but just how are we gonna distribute these when we have them? And then, education is a huge component of this, I, I think if you, I mean, you know, i- if, I, I would venture to say, any one of you reached out to your own network and talked to your people about a vaccine, probably a lot of them reluctant to, to take it initially at first, and so, what is our role at the county in terms of education, um, how, how do we educate, how do we get, you know, our word out there, these are all things that we are trying to, I mean, again, we, we've been working on this to some extent, but it's gonna become incredibly important moving forward, because we're on the cusp now of having these vaccines, and so, that's, that is where my time primarily has been spent. Um, we did in this last week, and, and I, I know this, this makes a lot of us feel better, we picked up a bunch of air purifiers, um, I, I've already mentioned her, but Assistant Chief Hilliker did great work on researching purifiers that help, I mean, we do think that there is an airborne element of COVID-19, but we've got the same purifiers that they're using up at Children's Mercy Hospital to help take these spores out of the air, and so, um, we, we've got a bunch of them, frankly, delivery was prompt, we've already got them, and we have placed them strategically around the county, I mean, my first priority is to have them in locations where our first responders are located at, and so, the metric I used was, you know, eh, eh, what departments do we have that are literally responsible for the health and safety of our people? And I think we would all agree that we don't wanna lose any county department, like, any department being quarantined and us not being able to provide that service, that would be a problem, but it wouldn't necessarily mean the loss of, of health and safety, but take ambulance, for example, like, we cannot afford an outbreak over there, dispatch, the sheriff's office, like, there are certain departments that it's critical that we have boots on the ground out there performing their service, and, and those have received priority in terms of where we're putting these purifiers, and so, it's just another level of protection that we are trying to offer here, so that we can keep offering our services and keep our employees safe. And I, with that, Cole, I don't have anything else, I'm happy to turn it over to Nick, unless any of you have questions.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, I do have a question, and this might be a Nick question, um, at the point where we can no longer really truly contact trace, and I know we have some people that that is their main priority, at that time, do they, will they no longer be employed by the county, or do we have places to move them so that they, um, can still work, uh, through this pandemic with us?
Yeah, I mean, I think, a- and Nick can certainly supplement this answer, but i- if we get to the point where we can't contact trace, that certainly, obviously, that, if anything, that marks a surge in the pandemic, and we will absolutely be able to keep those folks on and keep them busy for the duration of, of this event, so I don't see that being an issue.
All right, we appreciate your update, Derek. Nick, are you on?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I wanna jump in with your question, or Commissioner Dickinson's question, I'm sorry, um, we, uh, we will more than likely hit that point where contact tracing falls off, but the thing is, we still have to test, we still have to keep track of the positives that we have, and at this point in time, we're looking at about 180 positives with, uh, a surge on the way, and, and I'm gonna jump into that right off the bat, because I think that's the most important thing that we need, need to talk about today. So, for November, we ended up with a 22.69 positivity rate, interesting part about that is, is the last two weeks of the event, of November, which is right around the holiday season, we saw a decrease in people wanting to get tested, we saw a decrease in positivity. The last two weeks, we only had 199 positives, which actually, with the tests that we did, go to 14.9% positivity rate. As I, uh, talked to my DSF-18 team yesterday, and Mercy Facility yesterday, um, I said, wait and see what happens, and I will tell you, this morning, we tested, uh, on Monday, roughly 60 people, we had 12 positives come in from Monday today, so a third of the people we tested on Monday were positive, a- and I think that's more, uh, evidence that we're gonna continue to see positives, we have, uh, multiple people contacting with symptoms, um, if anybody scanned Facebook, there was a lot of people that got together, a lot of people didn't take precautions, so, we, we're knocking on that door, but I, uh, I know people will see, uh, percentage rates for 15, 16% by tomorrow, and I hope it doesn't cause a false score, because we're, we're nowhere out of the, out of, out of, um, with that, the other question I continue to have, and I don't know if any of you do, but I wanna talk through it, is when Casey and I read the city numbers, we do have Greeley in there, we do have, uh, Baldwin City in there, uh, if, on the north side of our county, Baldwin City does have addresses, but they are Franklin County citizens, and it's just like, Welsville's one of those that we take close attention to, because Miami County, Johnston County, and I also think Douglas County has some Welsville addresses, so, that's a, a working point that we have to stay on top of, so, everything that is reported in that, are Franklin County citizens, we, uh, we work hard to make sure that we, we keep this. The thing we got into, and I've talked about this multiple times, is we are only as good as what the information we get from the state is, and... And through this pandemic, we continue to see failure at that one. Uh, stuff getting reported uh, stuff getting reported as 12, 10, eight days after somebody's tested outside of our community. And that's really where our biggest struggle is, is being able to trace those. The other thing that, that we have trouble with is the, the counties surrounding us, that their, that their uh, health departments have pretty much, in lack of better terms, thrown their hands in the air and, and, and said, we can't do this. And turned it over to the state. And I will tell you, that's, that is the last thing that I, I ought to do. Because I personally have family members that have had COVID in Western Kansas. And the guidance coming from there and, and coming from the state shows exactly why we're continuing to see a surge. So with uh, I, I do wanna jump in, number one, and start with Dr. Ransom. I thank you for uh, for you guys approving that raise for him. I will tell you, we have a good and a heck of a working relationship. But without him, our daily functions cease. Uh, if you look to Coffee County where their health officer quit because of some decisions that were made down there, that took the health department out of COVID, but it also took them out of their daily routine vaccines and, and pregnancy tests and all of that. They don't have them. So his job with the county is very important, and he does a heck of a job at it. So, big thing that's gonna be coming down the pipes over the next week is the state of Kansas has uh, contracted with a company to attempt to test about 15% of the Kansas population for COVID. This is gonna be free drive-through testing. And Franklin County was one of the counties out of, I believe. Um, they're still working through this, it's still kind of a, um, a process. But I think there's about 14 to 16 counties that they're wanting to set up in, and Franklin County is one of them. What this'll be is they've asked us to provide them a site where they can get busy traffic and a site where it'll be slower. Uh, I will tell you that Miami County, Anderson County, Osage County are not a part of this. So we're trying to strategically place this where maybe those citizens can have access to it as well. Location we chose that we're working through is uh, either Celebration Hall or Forest Park for our main location. And then we're looking at setting up in Pomona for our, our slower location. The thing is that, that concerns me with it is they're going to offer drive-through testing. With that, the communication to us, and this is where we're working through, and how are they gonna tell us who they've tested? And how are we gonna find out these results? Because they just go directly to the state. As we know, we can be dropped eight days before they run back to us. We can see the way that they report. So there's a lot of legitimate stuff. It hasn't happened before Monday when they plan to start. You see, you see testing coming about and you see drive-through testing popping up. It is gonna happen in Franklin County. And they will start by Monday. So uh, this will be a PCR test, which is the test that we would like to see for uh, all asymptomatic individuals, so that is a good thing. The other thing with this is gonna be a saliva test. So they're not gonna lobbing people's noses, they're gonna be doing saliva, which isn't the, the best thing, but it's, it's better than nothing. So we're, we're kind of optimistically excited about this just because it will allow us to test more of our population. And, and hopefully coming into this, what we're considering could be a surge, help us identify more. Where the concern comes is if we continue, we see a bunch of positives, it will inhibit the uh, ability to do a lot of good contact tracing because we will be contacting positives and working through that. So there's a, but there's good things and bad things that will come from that. And uh, I uh, I'm excited that Franklin County was one that was chosen. Um, I believe the uh, one thing, I wanna give you a quick report. Nursing facilities as of right now, knock on wood, we have no residents in any nursing facilities that are positive. You know, Rock Creek has went through a, a, a lot of it. They, they were troopers over there. I, I can't speak how, how proud I am of the way their administrative staff handled this, how they worked with us. And, and right now they've got it under control, which i- is good. Uh, we do continue to see a few, as they continue random testing, a few of their employees popping up positive, and we continue to work through that. And, and I think they're all doing a good job doing what they can to protect the residents. That's kudos to them. So we have seen a couple of positive staff members, but nothing exciting within our, our community of uh, nursing facilities. Is there a, I'm sure I'm missing something, but if there's anything that you guys would like to ask, I'd be happy to answer it.
Nick, this is Derek. You wanna touch on hospitals right quick?
Yes, thank you. Um, talking about hospitals, we uh, right before Thanksgiving, we saw, I believe, nine patients in Advent dropped back down to uh, actually, I believe as of right now, one's there. We did have another uh, death last night. So we're down, I believe, one in the hospital. The uh, hospitals are still continuing to see um, the ICU beds getting full. We're still having briefings on what uh, what the plan's gonna be if the surge does hit. But we're, we're, I guess, right now seeing the calm before the storm because we have seen a decrease in, in the hospitalizations in our community. But the city's still seeing that, that uh, hospitals are getting full. And like I said, it's the, the biggest concern, and, and I've heard a lot of people say, well, that people recover from it. The, the thing is, is people do recover from it, but they may be hospitalized for two to three weeks. And, and with that, they are taking beds from family members that, or, or citizens that, that may not have COVID, need treatment, and they aren't able to get that treatment. Because that patients, and they're taking so long to, to recover. So just because people doesn't have COVID, it's still gonna affect them when these COVID patients are on the floors in these hospitals. And I think that's the most important message that people need to hear.
Uh, Nick, this is Commissioner Dunn. Uh, that new uh, Pfizer vaccine needs to be stored as such at extreme low temperatures. Anything uh, we need to get to accommodate that?
We purchased a freezer that will uh, not get quite that, that cold. But we did purchase a freezer in anticipation for them, eh, with the recommendations that we initially had. The good news coming out of this is they're talking that when this shipment comes in, that the ice that it will be shipped into our locations, um, will keep it cold at that temperature for 14 days. Uh, so our distribution plans are going to be um, to get that vaccine distributed in those 14 days. And that falls into the point where we're gonna be working with the local hospital. Our nursing staff's gonna be busy with our distribution plan to distribute that much vaccine in those 14 days. But, but the way we have been told now is when it ships, the uh, ice and the way that it's packed, we will have 14 days before it will have to go into a freezer.
Okay. And this, this is Derek. I, I can guarantee you, um, if we don't have that vaccine distributed within 14 days, it will not be because we weren't able to do so. It will be because there's not sufficient demand for it. We will be, and we will be well set up to have it done well before then. We just have to make sure there's appropriate demand. And given what the supply is like to, is likely to, to look like, especially at the beginning of this, I, I don't think there will be a demand issue. So I think we will be set up very well to do that within 14 days.
All right, well, thank you Nick.
Thank you.
David Lee, Public Works. David, I sent you an email, I think we all got this morning, all the commissioners, about the roads, so.
Yes, sir. I reviewed that and passed it along to the appropriate parties, both the city and the state already. So I'm not sure that uh, we had any, uh, that we have a dog in that particular fight.
I didn't think we did either.
So um, uh, with the holiday last week and just a few days this week, our crews um, have, they have finished the debris removal on two bridges over the Apennines Creek. Uh, one on Reno west of Florida and one on Georgia just south of Reno, so right in that area. Uh, today we're cleaning debris on a, on a Utah road bridge south of Sand Creek. Uh, and all of that debris has been hauled to the transfer station to our um, you know, we've got a large debris pile out there that we burn occasionally. And we are doing that uh, this week ahead of the rains that are coming uh, tomorrow. So um, we're in good shape there. Uh, we've also replaced uh, culverts and repaired ditches on Stafford east of California and replaced another culvert on Ellis Terrace east of Colorado. So that's uh, that is what we've been doing the, the last week or so.
All right.
Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, Commissioner Dunn, uh, David, there's a, a pothole developing there on 15th Street and Marshall. Uh, right underneath the uh, 535 Bridge, right there at the uh, on and off ramps on the east side of the bridge, it's uh, developing.
That, that would be um, in the KDOT right away, and I will get ahold of uh, those folks and let them know that uh, we have this situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you David. Janet.
Good morning Commissioners. Um, my time pretty much the last um, two plus days has been spent exclusively reviewing all of our um, Spark Plan for um, COVID response. Uh, making sure that we have all the appropriate audit trails all complete and that our um, our, that Widow Brian has everything that they need from us to make sure that we're compliant. Um, we worked on our compliance report to the state that was due on Monday. Um, Alicia and I did, and um, some other department heads. So um, David Lee and Erin Laurie, um, in the Health Department helped me out. Um, talking about um, what other grants we ha- we get that we have administered so we can make sure that we're giving the state um, adequate information. So hopefully it won't result in um, any further audit on our, on our documents. But I wanna be ready in case we are. So I also wanna be ready when Rodney, our regular auditor, comes in to do our single audit that will be required this year because we have the Spark funding. So um, also just making sure that we're on track to get all of our invoices paid by December 30th because um, as you may or may not know, all of our invoices for our projects have to be paid by December 30th in order to qualify for the Spark funding money. So just making sure that we get all of that wrapped up and um, taken care of. So that's been um, very time consuming. But all the department heads who have projects are working really hard and, and working very closely with me to make sure that their projects are all um, completely funded and finished and ready to go by December 30th so that we're 100% compliant with the Spark funding projects. So that's what's been going on here. Also, um, I will say that um, you know, I know there's been some concern about um, the Registered Deeds Office. And when they went down to two staff members in there. Uh, Lynn from my office has been going over there nearly every day and training with them. Um, because I know that Sue has let many of you know that they have been very busy recording mortgages and, and home sales and things like that. So the deeds office has been very busy and Lynn's been helping out over there. And then also um, yesterday, Betsy from my office started um, helping over in the treasurer's office because as you know, um, tax payments are ramping up over there and they are becoming very busy very quickly. And they were a tremendous help to us during election season, so we want to be a help to them also. So um, Betsy was training yesterday to help them process tax payments so we can help them out. So um, just wanna let you guys know that um, we really strive to be a cohesive team here in the courthouse. And, and I think that um, throughout this year and all the different needs that the departments have had, I think we've all done a great job to work together. And I would just say thank you to Sue and thank you to Jody um, for their help when I needed it. And I hope that um, they feel the same way, you know, as the favors return, so.
All right, appreciate you. You all uh, in the courthouse uh, stepping in to, to make things work, so.
One, one more thing I will let you know, and then um, I am working with uh, several department heads on getting a budget amendment ready. So hopefully we're gonna have that published in the paper um, on Tuesday. And then we'll be ready for a budget hearing. We will have to have that budget hearing right before Christmas. So um, we'll have to have that, likely have to have that meeting on the 23rd. If anybody has any um, any conflicts or anything with that meeting, um, we could potentially do it the 30th or schedule a, a special meeting. I mean, obviously, as you guys know, uh, budget amendment hearing meeting might take us five minutes at most. So uh, these are normal things that we do at the end of the year. And we've had um, as you know, um, we always are watching solid waste at the end of the year to see how much revenue they're going to get and um, in response to increases in trash hauling. And so we'll be doing one for that. We'll also be doing, uh, probably be doing one for the annex remodel as we didn't know how much that would cost, so we did not budget for that in this year. And some just other regular miscellaneous cleanup things that I watch every year. So that will be coming down the pipe too. So please let me know if, if either the 23rd or the 30th um, work for you or don't work for you. We could potentially have it published on Saturday, um, which would put us um, ready to have a budget hearing by the 16th. But Nick wanted me to give him just a little bit of extra time so he could review the ambulance budget. Because as you know, the ambulance budget is generally one of those that we're watching at the end of the year to see how revenue came in so we could budget appropriately for transfers.
And the 23rd's uh, Wednesday, so we'll have a regular scheduled meetings the day before Christmas Eve?
Yes.
Uh, Lieutenant Dunn, I got a question for Janet.
Sure, go ahead.
Those uh, legal no- those legal notices in the paper are printed so small you can't even see it. You can't even read it with a microscope.
We also publish all of our um, all of our um, resolutions on, on our webpage. And we are working to, when we uh, migrate to our new website, um, Casey and I have had discussions about setting up a page where we specifically put legal notices so that if, if people don't get the newspaper, they can still see what legal notices we publish in the paper. And I, I am already in discussions with my association um, for next year's legislative session to potentially put something before legislators to change how we publish legal notices. Because as you know, the circulation of the newspaper is down dramatically and we're down to only two days a week. And um, it's difficult many times to get those legal notices in the paper in an appropriate timeframe. You know, if, if I, if I get them over to her and they don't have room for a week or so in the paper, and then we're already a week out. And so we just think that there's probably a lot uh, more efficient way to publish those somewhere different. And so my association's gonna be working on that this legislative session. So if anyone wants to see legal notices, I always can email them a copy of the official legal notice that I um, receive back from the newspaper. Um, or um, like I said, those resolutions are all out on our website, so anyone can look at those.
Yeah Janet, I was just referring to the uh, property tax uh, thing in the paper. It was so small, it, they might as well just add a blank page there. Anyway, just passing that on.
I will let Jody know. She worked with them on getting something appropriate published because that's a legal requirement for her. Um, however, the cost that they gave her to publish that was very high. So she worked with them to get something that was um, budget appropriate and you know, still met the qualifications. So I haven't taken a look at that, so I will do that, Roy. Thanks for letting me know.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you Janet. Uh, Commissioners' Comments Board Report. All right. Thank you, Janet. Uh, Commissioners' Comments Board reports. Commissioner Dickinson.
Yeah, I, uh, this is Commissioner Dickinson. I, uh, volunteered at the, the Community Thanksgiving Dinner. We wore our mask, we socially distanced. Um, and our own Sari Maple was also a volunteer. Um, as part of that, we also, we got to deliver Thanksgiving dinners, uh, to, uh, the ambulance service, to the nine-one-one operators, to, um, the employees at the jail and the employees at JDC. Um, along with the meals, they also had, uh, coats and hats and gloves and blankets donated that people could, um, take if it was something that they could use. And there were a lot of those given out. Um, at the end of the day, we had some pie left over. So, um, my husband, who is the chaplain at the, uh, the jail, uh, was able to take a piece of pumpkin pie to each of the inmates, um, which they very much appreciated. And then I was going to just let, uh, the gals know that I did hear from some county employees who have been very appreciative of the T-shirt, the, 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 the T-shirts that they could order. Um, we have not been able to do a lot for our employees. And, and I did tell them that was not our idea, but we did approve it and I, we also thought it was a great idea. And then just one more comment. So, the governor has, um, issued a second mask ordinance, uh, order. And this time around, uh, more than half the states have approved that order. So, I think that a lot of them have finally figured out that what, what we figured out a long time ago. And again, with our chief medical officer, um, letting us know that that really is something that needs to be done. So, I, I, we just keep encouraging people to wear their masks, socially distance. Um, let's just be smart and let's just get through this so that, uh, we can move forward after COVID. And that's it.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Uh, I don't have anything at this time.
All right. Commissioner Howard?
I don't have anything.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah, uh, Janet, still there?
Yes.
Hey, are you guys doing your Christmas deal with the family this year? Anybody, hear anybody?
I can hear you. I can't hear her either.
Maybe she signed off.
Uh-huh. Uh, she was there.
She signed off, Janet?
She's still on. Maybe, uh, catch up with her after the meeting, Dawn?
Yeah, I'll, I'll figure something out. No problem. Go on.
Okay. Well, it's up to you. You have any, uh, thing for Commissioners' Comments Board reports? Anything you need to add before we close the meeting, Dawn?
Cheer away, Mar. I'm sorry. I accidentally disconnected right when Dawn asked me that question. And we, we are not doing a family at the courthouse this year. Just that, like I said, we have a lot going on adjusting to the new schedule and the deeds office and, um, with the presidential election and tax statements, we just didn't get it done this year. So, um, we will be looking to do that again next year.
And you know, I can help you over here.
Okay.
With Mike.
Yes, I know. Um, and I, I will, I'll see what I can figure out on that.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Hope there's nothing else. Uh, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Dawn.
All right. Thank you, Dawn. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Howard.
All right. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Any opposed?